Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Chief Justice, Justice of the Supreme Judicial Court. My name is Jeffrey Allen and I represent 81 Spooner Road. Before I get into the legal aspects of our claim here before you this morning, I want to just take a brief moment and review several, just a handful of facts, which I think are pertinent and need to be underscored in your analysis of this case. 81 Spooner Road is a LLC that bought a house, 81 Spooner Road in Brookline. It then subdivided that lot by way of an A&R plan approved by the town of Brookline and subsequently built a new home, partially built a new home, 71 Spooner Road. The question, there's no question that the land, in terms of the zoning, was sufficient for a house. In other words, it's a 10,000 square foot lot minimum. Both lots exceeded the 10,000 square feet. This is the most important fact, I think, that's important because when you read the briefs, it's almost like my clients are some rogue outlaws. My clients requested and reviewed and received from the town of Brookline a building permit and built the house according to the building permit. This isn't a case where a builder went ahead without a building permit. This isn't a case where a builder got a building permit and built differently than the plans submitted to the town of Brookline. The building commissioner of the town of Brookline, and this is not, as some of the cases refer to, a rogue building commission. This was a gentleman who had been in office for some 20 years. The building commissioner of the town of Brookline issued them a building permit.
Was the building permit for a house of a particular size?
Yes.
And what was the size of the house?
The size as built. The house that is in question, the 71 Spooner Road, was built to the exact specifications of the plans approved by the building department.
Right, but wasn't one of the issues is that there was 1,000 feet of what was characterized as unfinished space, which other evidence suggests was going to be the master bedroom?
Yes, that was the issue. But in Brookline, at that time, you were allowed after a building, after a certificate of occupancy was issued, you were allowed as a matter of right to convert an attic to livable space as long as it didn't exceed 1.5 of the allowed FAR. So it was common practice at that time to convert attics to living space after the issuance of a CO. So a lot of attics could be converted.
And that was, that was open and up? I mean, in other words, it wasn't a surreptitious conversion after the fact?
No, it was never converted because this case stopped it. But you could convert it. Since the issuance of this, subsequent to the issuance of this building permit, the town changed the bylaw. Now you can do the same thing, but you have to wait 10 years after the issuance of a building permit.
Then wasn't that in the first, the case that was here before? Wasn't that already in the bylaw?
Yes, but the case before was a constitutional challenge
Right, to the bylaw.
To the concept of regulating interior space. That basically the challenge then was if, the claim then was if they allow you to build it, they can't stop you from using it. But I think it's important that the house was built pursuant to a building permit. We do, we do not contest that both Mr. Fogg and Mrs. Fogg, living on different sides, son, mother, are abutters. That's one of the issues that's not.
And therefore no contesting that they have presumptive standing.
That is correct, Your Honor. And sometime after the building permit was issued and not appealed, the Fogs brought an enforcement action to the town of Brookline. The building commissioner denied their enforcement action. The Board of Appeals overturned that denial in part. And then it was cross appeals to the land court. And as a result of the land court decision, in effect, the Fogs' appeals were upheld, their claims were upheld. And that's what brings us here.
So the permits revoked?
I wouldn't say that, Your Honor. The work stopped.
But didn't it?
The judgment, I'm sorry, the judgment never became final because we appealed it. They sent us a stop work order. We were prepared to file a restraining order. And then we agreed with the town to stop work and no work, other than to make the building safe. The building has been boarded up and sat there, no work.
And the town says regardless of what happens here today, they don't plan to issue you a building permit for 71?
I don't, if, that's an issue for another day. But if, in fact, that is the case, I don't believe that they can do that, Your Honor. I don't believe that in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a municipality can give you a building permit, have you build a house. The house is 80% done. And then five years later say to you, no, we made a mistake. Please tear that down. That's a taking, but that's for another day.
That's not, that's not before us. So the issue before us, the issue before us, I gather, is standing.
And one fact before I get right to the standing. There's a notation in the appeals court brief that is troubling, appeals court decision which is troubling. We don't know the origin of it. We think it's a mistake. They say we never appealed Mrs. Fogg's standing. Nothing could be further than from the truth. Throughout our appeals court brief and throughout our appeal, we challenged her standing in the same way. And we make a reference to that in our brief to this court. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because I can't argue it because it's an unsighted reference and I'm not sure where that came from. I spent a lot of time trying to figure it out and I haven't been able to. In short, in this case, we relied on this court's decision in Standewick versus the zoning board of Andover, which is founded 447 Mass., page 20. In that case, at page 35, this court said, "In a summary judgment context, a defendant is not required to present affirmative evidence that refutes a plaintiff's basis for standing. It is enough that the moving party demonstrates by reference to material described in the summary judgment rule and unmet by countervailing materials that the party opposing the motion has no reasonable expectation of providing a legally cognizable injury." That's exactly what we did in this case. And not only was our motion for summary judgment denied, but the motion, the countervailing motion was allowed and the issue of standing became foreclosed.
But isn't that conflating the two steps here? I mean, the first step is whether or not you have provided sufficient evidence to defeat the presumption. If you did that, then the presumption is a bursting bubble presumption. It's gone. And then the plaintiff must bear its burden. And you're in the usual world of summary judgment. Appeals court says you, but by simply offering the deposition of the Fogs, or Mr. Fogg, I'm not sure if both Fogs, that that was inadequate to defeat the presumption, that you need to do something more than that to defeat a presumption, otherwise the presumption essentially is without consequence.
That is what they say, but there are, because this court specifically said in Standewick at page 36, that you don't have to present any evidence if their evidence isn't sufficient to prove a cognizable injury. So I think we have to look at what their evidence is.
But in fairness, in Standewick, what the court said, the cognizable injury that was at issue there was the diminution in the value of the property. And since that was a 40B case, the court said that's not a cognizable injury. So put that aside.
But Standewick also stands for the proposition that in a standing case, let's take loss of value, as Your Honor. Stand also stands for the principle, you can't testify, "My standing is based that this is going to cause me a loss in value." Do you have any evidence of that? No. Have you talked to any real estate brokers? No. Have you done any studies? No. So that's just your thoughts. Yes, that's the speculative injury that doesn't confer a standing. And if you look at, because if what I was saying wasn't true, any plaintiff in a land zoning case could come up with 10 bases for standing, having no basis for any of them.
Only any abutter.
Any abutter could come up with 10. And a developer would have to come up with 10 experts, even though there was no evidence to support their claim. And Standewick says, and this court says, "That's an unfair onus to put on the developer." There has to be some basis. And I would suggest that we look at what the Fogs said their basis for standing was.
Didn't they say, wasn't one of the things that they said was a concern about increased density?
Yes.
And isn't that what the FAR ratio is designed to deal with?
Partially, Your Honor.
Well, but partially, yes.
But I don't concur because this house was built, it matched the height and it matched the setbacks. The box of this house was correct. So the zoning violation they claim was that the third floor attics were going to be used as habitable space. These are single-family homes. And thus, using that third floor doesn't increase the density. They're single-family homes, one family. The house is the right height. The setbacks are right. There's no increase in density. But even if there was an increase in density, in order to, I don't believe that the law recognizes that the claim of density is a standing injury per se. You still have to go, just because the claimed violation is density, I still think you have to go the next step and show some injury as a result of that density.
Well, if you've got, if you're in a abutter and you have the bylaw that has a FAR ratio and you agree that at least in part, the purpose of the FAR ratio is to regulate density. And you're saying that what this building is going to do is increase the density. So therefore, my concern is hitting a concern that the bylaw is addressed, is designed to address. Why isn't that enough?
Well, it isn't enough for a couple of reasons because it's not going to increase the density. We are, if you look at the bylaw that's in the record, you can use the third floor after you get the certificate of occupancy. And the height does not change. The using of that third floor density in this context creates no harm to the abutter. In fact, Mr. Fogg testified, and it's in the record, and this is Mr. Fogg's testimony. It's at the appendix tab 53 of the motion for summary judgment, I believe. His testimony was, "The use of the third floor of the existing house at 81 Spooner Road," and I quote, "is not a factor of damage to him." Is not a factor of damage to him. How can he claim to be aggrieved by that if he says it's not a factor of damage?
But isn't that really the problem? I mean, if you're right, anybody can piece together bits and pieces of a plaintiff's deposition, perhaps a plaintiff who has not been sufficiently coached by the attorney, and they're going to be able to elicit those little bits.
That, you're right.
Clearly, he feels aggrieved enough to pay for an attorney and bring this action. So there's a reason why he is doing it. But certainly, in almost every case, you're going to be able to pick out little bits of a deposition from a layman, especially with this type of, with this type of somewhat amorphous harm. And you're going to be able to gather that kind of a statement.
Respectfully, two points, Your Honor. That's what the court said in Standewick. You can, that's, you can rely on summary judgment materials. That's deposition. They were free in summary judgment to come in with countervailing affidavits. They could have produced affidavits at summary judgment. They didn't. They chose to rest on their deposition testimony. They could have brought any expert they wanted at summary judgment. They didn't.
Okay, but doesn't that mean then, I mean, in terms of the presumption, that means that then a abutter, in order to preserve the presumption, is going to have to invest in essentially an expert?
Absolutely, Your Honor, and they should because...
But then isn't that, isn't the presumption designed to prevent the need for that until the defendant has bursted?
How can we fight a claim of standing if it isn't clearly delineated? Like Mrs. Fogg said, her claim is, there's too much muss. Well, we didn't, couldn't get a muss expert. And I don't mean to be facetious, but the plaintiff has to set forth a claim so we know what we're going after. And let me just say one thing.
Well, I mean, the judge did set forth what he understood to be the claims, greater suburban density, loss of privacy, sight lines, green space and trees, increased number of occupants, increased traffic and parking, value of home. I mean, there were things.
But that, none of that is relevant to a single-family home in a single-family district on a 10,000 square foot lot. That, none of that is relevant. That you don't like the looks of the home? That's not something protected? That you're going to tear down trees? That happens anytime you build. Let me just say one thing before I conclude, if I will. I noticed the red lights flashing. This is an important case for one reason. And why the plaintiff has to sustain that burden, Your Honor, and sustain that. We're not talking about an appeal from a request for a special permit or something like that. This is a house lawfully built under a building permit. And when someone is required to tear down a home and suffer millions of dollars of damage, there should be an injury that requires that.
But you say it's lawfully built. You lost on that. It was found to be not lawfully built.
Well, it was found that the building commissioner of the town was wrong to issue the building permit. It was built pursuant to a lawfully issued building permit that was unappealed. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I know your time's up, but I just wanted to ask one question because it seems like from the land court's opinion that if something happened with the, if you decommissioned space in the 81 Spooner Road house, this house would be lawfully built, your own? I mean, even under, even accepting what the town of Brookline says? Is that correct?
Yeah, if we decommissioned the 81 Spooner Road third floor house, which unfortunately we don't own anymore.
I understand.
Then the lot next door would be a legal lot. We would still have to take off a piece of 71. That's two separate issues. But the lot would be legal, Your Honor. The infectious, that would wipe out the infectious validity.
But not the problem that we're talking about?
Right, but the other problem can be handled with redesign. But so, that's my, I know my time's up, but that's my point. This, it was lawfully built. There was an appeal that changed that. But it was built towards a building permit. And I'm not saying that isolates or protects you in the Commonwealth. But before you tear down something that was built before, under a building permit issued by a town, there should be an injury that necessitates that. So I don't think it's an unfair burden, Your Honor, respectfully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
May it please the court, my name is James Wagner and I represent the abutter appellees, the George Fogg and Francis Fogg. With me, co-counsel is Jennifer DePauzo-Gilbert, who represents the town of Brookline. I have 10 minutes and she'll take five minutes. Your Honor, there are two issues, two legal issues that go to the standing issue here. One is whether this court intended, in the Standewick decision, to abandon 45 years of law precedent on standing that then was codified by the legislature in 1975.
Isn't that somewhat of a loaded way of placing the question?
Yes, Your Honor, it is loaded, but it is exactly what happened. In 1957, the Marada decision set forth the presumption of standing. In 1975, after the DCA issued a lengthy report talking about how to codify all the SJC case law, including that related to standing and how you enforce a bylaw, then revised 40A to specifically address who has standing by saying that abutters and abutters to abutters are entitled to be parties and interest. So it may be a loaded question, Your Honor, but it's exactly what happened historically, if I connect the dots.
So we have Standewick. We do have Standewick.
We do have Standewick.
Why doesn't it apply in this case the way plaintiffs suggest?
So two issues, Your Honor. I think that Standewick, in his language, is overly broad. I do not think that's what intended, the way that the developer has posed this is what Standewick intended to do.
Do you think Kenner supports Standewick? The developer's reading of Standewick or not?
No, Your Honor, because what happened in Kenner is the developer came forth with specific evidence as to why, in fact, the harm that was alleged by the abutter did not exist because there was a specific grade issue that made a mitigation of the harm that the abutter claimed. Very different from the circumstance here, where there was no evidence of any mitigation of a two and a half story illegally built house eight and a half feet away from my client's property. The second issue, and this...
When you say illegally built, you do concede that there was a building permit?
Yes, it was built and a permit, Your Honor, but is no longer before this court as to whether it was legal or not legal. It was determined by the land court to be not legal, affirmed by the appeals court and not brought to this court as to the issue of whether it's legal or illegal. It's not just the issue of whether 71 Spooner Road is too big. It's now an issue that 81 Spooner Road is also too big. And 71 Spooner Road is, does not have buildability, if you will. And therefore, the whole house should not be there.
So what's the issue before this court? You said standing, but what, how does that relate to what's going to happen?
Thank you, Your Honor. What's going to happen?
How does that relate to anything? Now that you say the building has been deemed to be illegally built, that's not appealed, so what's before us?
So the issue, the issue is standing. And you asked a question, Your Honor, earlier about what, if Standewick is to be applied as the developer seeks, what's different about this case than Standewick? Very specifically, Your Honor. Standewick, the abutter in that case admitted in answers to interrogatories, "I have no evidence of harm on this issue." The Fogs never said that. Instead, the issue here is the developer came in, solicited testimony in a deposition, "Tell me your personal opinion." Then went in on summary judgment and said, "Oh, all they have is personal opinions." Well, that doesn't burst the presumption. They still claimed harm. They did, the developer had to come forth with some evidence of how they did not, in fact, have harm. Secondly, we did, in fact, come forward with evidence as a backup in case the presumption were deemed burst. We did come forward with evidence. We came forward with plans. We came forward with photographs. And the reason that summary judgment entered is the developer still came forward with no evidence of how the harm alleged by the Fogs had not been mitigated. So it is absolutely clear in the record that developer came forward with no evidence, presumption stands. Even if the presumption didn't stand, Fogs came forward with uncontroverted evidence of their own that the harms that they claimed were not mitigated in this circumstance.
But the nature of the harms, when we're speaking about a density issue, are pretty amorphous. I mean, how is somebody to burst a presumption with such an amorphous set of issues with regard to density?
Your Honor is exactly correct. But there are circumstances where a density claim would, in fact, be mitigated. For example, like the Kenner case, if there were a difference in grades so you couldn't see the development that was being built. Or if the density were actually fronting on a different street from the abutters, from the abutters' house. Or if there were a big stand of trees or outcropping of rock or the house was on a corner and so that the density didn't really affect them. There certainly are circumstances where density would not necessarily affect a butter. But that's not this case. This case is about the house being built eight and a half feet off the property line, two and a half stories, where there should be no house at all.
Should be no house at all? I thought they could build a house as long as they kept within the .30 FAR or whatever it is.
No, Your Honor. The excess floor area ratio in the original house was never taken out, was never decommissioned by the developer.
That can be decommissioned, for sure.
No, Your Honor, because they've now, rather than doing decommissioning, as my client warned them they ought to, and it's in the records, in the trial record, they elected instead to sell the house, all six bedrooms in order to maximize the sales price on the house. They went forward at their risk not decommissioning 81 Spooner Road.
So are you moving now to get rid of 81 Spooner Road?
No, Your Honor. Once 71 Spooner Road is demolished, then 81 Spooner Road will be fully conforming.
Or if they pay 81 Spooner Road to decommission the attic, then they can also do it.
Yes, Your Honor.
So explain to me, if we find that there was no standing, what's the consequence here? Certainly the town has standing. Does he be...
Exactly, Your Honor. That's the point that we raised in our brief, is they can't now ignore the mistake that was made. The building, the building permit has been revoked. They can say it wasn't revoked, but I'm not sure what the, that there's any provision in 40A to suggest that the... So they, I assume that the town will enforce it and certainly another abutter could come in and ask for enforcement as well. So it's really, there is no remedy that's going to be of any value to the developer in this circumstance. Secondly, I was pointed out in our brief also that this actually, this doesn't get the developer exactly what they ask for. We came forward with evidence and for the land court of actual harm. We put forward the plans, we put forward the photographs. Even if somehow Judge Trombley erred in relying on the presumption, at best, we have a trial on standing in the land court. Since the developer came forward with no evidence of mitigation under these circumstances, I don't think there's anything to be tried.
But pragmatically, I mean, if they do prevail, then we vacate the judge's finding of standing. And either we grant them summary judgment as to the issue or the matter is set back and the opinion of the land court and of the appeals court is reversed.
Your Honor, it is not possible to reverse and give them summary judgment. Again, the Fogs did put forward evidence at trial of plans, photographs, diagrams. So there is evidence. So there will be some fact finding that has to be made in the trial court. But yes, it could go back to the trial court to say, okay, instead of relying on the presumption, I rely on the fact that the Fogs were the only ones who presented any evidence. The developers have no evidence and therefore Fogs get summary judgment on the alternative ground. Judge Trombley didn't, in his decision, rely on that alternative ground that he could have as a backup.
Explain to me, the town is a party in this case, aren't they?
Yes, Your Honor.
They were a party in the land court.
Yes, Your Honor.
They have standing, don't they?
Yes, Your Honor, the Board of Appeals is a party. They were defendant in the...
Essentially defending their decision revoking the permit?
Yes, Your Honor. I suppose that it's a somewhat different aspect of the town that would be involved in enforcing thereafter.
They don't get involved in standing, right?
Were they a party or a nominal party?
They, I don't know how to answer that exactly, Your Honor. They were a nominal party in that they, they were, in fact, a defendant. My Fogs were, the Fogs were challenging an aspect.
But they were not plaintiffs here.
They're not plaintiffs here, right. So they, they're, in the, if they were to go then and make enforcement, they would be in a somewhat different role than they are in this case. But as a practical matter, they're here.
And what do we do with these photos? The judge seemed to think they were important. But what meaning should we give from these photos of the house and the relationships of the house to the abutters?
Your Honor, they show exactly what the Fogs claimed, that they can see this property, that it's unmitigated, that the, there's two and a half stories, eight and a half feet off the property, just as they claimed. It shows the dangerous driveway that's a result of moving driveway from a safe location to an unsafe location. Those, that's the evidence that the...
But if it's two and a half stories and eight feet away from the property line and the attic space were not converted, what's the, I guess I'm just missing something.
Again, Your Honor, 81 Spooner Road itself, the existing house, had excess floor area in it for the lot. So therefore, the land...
Is the infectious validity issue?
Yes, Your Honor.
Well, if 71 Spooner Road is torn down, and can 81 Spooner Road be occupied as a two and a half story house, eight and a half feet away from your client's?
The eight and a half feet is the 71 Spooner Road, Your Honor. The new house. I'm sorry, the question again is...
If, I guess I'm, it may very well be, what I'm asking is that if 81 Spooner Road is torn down, 71 Spooner Road will still be, could legitimately continue to exist at two and a half stories and eight and a half feet away from your client's house?
If the pre-existing house were torn down?
That's 81, is the pre-existing house?
81 Spooner Road, if the pre-existing house were torn down, yes. The new house could exist. Conversely, if the new house were torn down, then 81 Spooner Road would be conforming.
Which is a house that's eight and a half feet away?
That's 71, the new house.
And I take it, though, that if 81 were torn down, 71 could continue to exist?
Yes, Your Honor.
At eight and a half feet away from your client's house?
Yes, Your Honor.
At a height of two and a half stories?
Yes, Your Honor.
So where's the harm?
Well, because instead of having one house next door to the Fogs, they now have two houses next door to the Fogs.
They could have two houses if the Verlanders, if I have the name right, decommissioned the third floor. They could also have two houses just looking exactly the same, correct?
Yes, Your Honor, if they did that.
Thank you.
Good morning, may it please the court. My name is...
My name is Jennifer DePaso-Gilbert, and I represent the Town of Brookline Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to correct what Mr. Wagner just said. Actually, 81 Spooner Road, the original house, cannot be decommissioned without changing the house. Originally, when this house was bought with the additional lot, it had an FAR of .17 in a .30 district. Once the land was subdivided, the FAR went to .36, and that was shown by expert testimony at the land court. Since that time, decommissioning does not mean removing finish in an attic or other habitable area.
So the land court is wrong?
No, the land court was...
The land court has a footnote, I believe, saying if this happened, 71 would be okay.
That's correct, but since that time, the bylaw has changed. In March of this year, the developer came to the Zoning Board of Appeals again, requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals issue an order to the Velanders, the owners of 81 Spooner Road, the original house, to decommission that space in order to give them a buildable lot where the new house sits at 71 Spooner Road. That request was denied. To decommission today, they would have to rip off, remove, the entire third floor of the original house. Decommissioning in Brookline no longer means removing plugs, finish, plumbing, et cetera. So the house would look much smaller without the third floor. In addition, it's now a local historic district, so to decommission that original house would be a huge feat for the Velanders. And quite frankly, they were sold the house by the developers, and the house was marketed, the original house, as having habitable space on the third floor. Now, when that...
Is there a grandfathering issue involved in what you just described?
No.
Okay.
Now, the reliance of the developer on Standerwick is misplaced. In Standerwick, the court specifically made a distinction between a 40A standing case and a 40B standing case. The two cognizable injuries that were elicited in Standerwick dealt with traffic and drainage. For those issues that were raised, there was expert testimony to rebut that, to burst the bubble of presumption. With respect to the crime and vandalism allegations to raise standing, those were dismissed as speculative and based purely on opinion, and those also were considered not the cognizable injuries that 40A or 40B were intended to protect. With respect to the diminution of value, the court made the distinction that in a 40B case, that's exactly the obstacle that 40B was intended to avoid so that affordable housing could be built. I'd like to also go into the facts a little bit more, because there may be some confusion. 81 Spooner Road was the original house. It has been deemed to have a third floor, which adds excess to the house, which makes it a non-conforming lot, rendering the new lot unbuildable under this theory of infectious invalidity. 71 Spooner Road was, the plans were submitted to the building commissioner, and the permit was issued based on completely misleading plans. The plans showed 1,000 square feet of unfinished space. However, the plans indicated that there were bedrooms numbers two through five. It came through at the land court, and the appeals court properly saw that that 1,000 square feet of unfinished space, which the developer would like to believe was attic, but was located on the second floor of the house by the main stairway, with two walk-in closets and a master bath, right next to the other bedrooms on the same floor, that wasn't an attic that could be finished. It couldn't be converted under the bylaw at a later date because it was never an attic. It was habitable space, always intended to be just that, a master bedroom, two walk-in closets, and a master bath.
If I could go back to the presumption issue for a moment, how does one burst a presumption when the issue is density? I mean, what could they have done, or what could somebody do, when an abutter says, "That's an awful big house. I just don't, I don't want that big a house next to me."
Well, what does density do? The town uses density to regulate bulk. Bulk and density equal intensity of use. If you have too large of a house, in this case, the new house itself, as the developer has stated, counsel has stated, they'd have to remove a piece of that house, an entire piece, 1,000 square feet would need to be removed. It would reduce not only the size of the house, it would reduce the occupancy, and it would bring it within the FAR that's allowed. And the Fogs have every right, and we know that from two appeals court decisions that are right on point, they may challenge overcrowding of an abutter's lot. They now have two illegal homes sitting right next to each of their homes, too large, too dense, and too much bulk. A piece would need to be, to legalize both properties now, you'd have to remove the third floor of the original house and remove, as counsel stated, for the developer, an entire piece of the new house for those two properties to be conforming. In Dwyer versus Gallo, the appeals court stated, "Crowding of an abutter's residential property by violation of density provisions of the zoning bylaw constitutes harm to qualify the abutter as an aggrieved party. It's a cognizable injury." Furthermore, Murray versus Barnstable, another appeals court case, plaintiffs had a legitimate interest in preserving single-family one-acre lots, and likewise, the Fogs had a legitimate interest in preserving the integrity of a .30 district from over-dense developments. This is what this is about, it's about over-density.
You're telling yourself.
Thank you very much.